So we'll call this Graham County Board of Commissioners meeting for September 16th, 2025 at work. Members of the county board commissioners are advised hereby under the state government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and the appearances of such conflict and further are instructed to refrain from participating in any matter coming before the Board of County Commissioners with respect which there is conflict of interest or appearance of such conflict. And we'll ask Mr. Owen Cogan for the indication.
Let's pray. Good day, Heavenly Father, just thank you for this glorious day that you've given us. And Father, just thank you for everything that you do for us. And Father, we just give you all praise for everything that you do. Father, we ask for your guidance and your help. And Father, most of all, just to be able to help our county and to be able to provide for them. And Father, we ask that you just continue just to be with each and every one of us, Father, and just guide us and, Father, and just continue just to bless us and just protect us. And Father, we ask that just be with our families and most of all, our counties, especially those who are sick and ill. Father, we just ask that you just reach out a touching and loving hand. And Father, and just comfort those lost loved ones and, Father, and just continue just to comfort them. And Father, we just ask that you just be with us in the coming days and just watch over us. And Father, in all these things we ask of you in your precious and holiest name, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can't believe we have to change the religion.
Yeah, it's just one match here. Just after eight, just where I guess, let's just put it, uh, no, just a request to surplus transit.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with mentioned change? And can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the workshop and regular meeting for August to 19?
The number.
Second. Okay. Can I have a motion to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing for a combined capital application for the 5310 Transit and 5310 Senior Center? Second. All right, favor. Okay. Ms. Tracy Jenkins.
Thank you very much for letting me be here today. Anybody else not everybody? Ms. Tracy Jenkins, I am the Transit Director. Sorry, I'm gonna lose my voice. I'm asking for the Commissioner's blessing to apply for the FY27 admin and CT admin and capital grant. Right now, the admin grant is at a hundred and seven thousand, hundred and seven and thirty thousand, thirty-four dollars, I'm so sorry, with a county match of sixteen thousand and fifty-five dollars. The capital grant will be to replace two pathfinders with two handicap lift-equipped vehicles, which will be more accessible for ADA in our fleet, lettering for those vehicles and software maintenance for the current software we're using in our system. The amount for that grant is $232,546 with a county match of $23,256. Total grant for both of those grants is $339,580. And the match for the two is $39,311. And at this point, I do have that in a reserve fund for transit.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Any public comment?
I would like to ask you for blessing to apply for the 53T grant. That's for elderly and disabled transportation. We contract with Tracy with Transit to provide those services. The amount that I'm applying for is $129,585. And it also has a county match, which is 10%. It is $12,959.
Any public comment, questions? Hi, thank you. So a motion to close the public hearing as we open the regular meeting. So I want a motion to approve transit for the FY27.
A motion to the senior grant?
It's in the same one. It's the same grant, it's just in two parts, but it goes to the same place.
Okay.
Yeah, we're good.
So I'll make a motion to approve Senior, Senior, and Transit for the 5310 grants. One second. All right. So we will have Mrs. Stewart with the update for the extension for HU.
With the board's permission, I've learned that some slides, FY technology, there works needed, so. All right, so I wanted to come and kind of update you guys on where we are with the Graham County Agriculture Event Center. Actually, I also want to kind of mention that this building that we're wanting to build, it's not specifically just for agriculture. It's built on an agricultural framework because like we want to be able to have course events, we want Earth Rage Clubs to be able to use it, we want FFA to be able to use, we want the whole community involved with it. So, you know, maybe we can coin it something a little better in the future, but the whole idea behind this event center is that it's designed to help preserve our heritage. Our county was kind of founded on farming, so I think it's important that we preserve that heritage. This event center is going to help strengthen our community and hopefully inspire our next generation to be leaders. So I want to kind of give you a little backstory if you'll look at slide number two on the packet that I gave you. So we've got some data here about agricultural production in Graham County. And this is kind of an eye-opener for me. If you look at the top line animal sales, we've got $903,000 worth of animal sales just in Graham County. And this information is actually from the U.S. Census in 2022. So agriculture is alive and well. If you will look at the next slide, the backstory continued, you'll also see some numbers for crop sales. And I'm not going to go into all the details about all that, but the next slide, I have a comparison of these animal sales and crop sales against Swain County, just to kind of give you an idea of how big the agriculture industry is in Graham County. And so I presented this information to Graham County Travel and Tourism Board here a while back in hopes to gain some sponsorship for this event center. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes, but I kind of wanted to kind of talk to everybody about why, like the justification behind this event center, why we need this event center. And so I already mentioned, like, it's going to be great for us to get all kinds of different community organizations involved. It's going to be a multipurpose event center. And it's our hope that would increase community engagement, it's going to promote agritourism, economic development, and promote ag education. And so I wanted to tell you a little bit about where we are in this process because I know everybody kind of knows, there's been talk about it coming. So if you'll look at the slide titled Ag Development Project Progress, I probably jumped ahead a little bit because I'm gonna be honest, I'm a little bit nervous. So we filled out a grant application through North Carolina Department of Agriculture, and it's part of their farmland preservation trust funds. And so we're waiting to hear a little bit more information from that. And I'll talk more about that in a second, but so we've filled out the grant application, we've kind of identified some feasible cost. That's kind of been a big undertaking trying to figure out what's something like this going to cost Graham, not Graham County. We want to use grant funds to be able to fund this project because I know Graham County already has other issues with funding. We need a new justice center, that kind of stuff. So I want to put that out there that we are not looking to use taxpayer money to fund this ag event center. So we've got the grant application, we finally identified some feasible costs, and we've been working on building up support. I think we've got a lot of good things going for us with the new FFA program, the new ag teacher, Adrian Wadz, is doing an excellent job with that. 4H has really took off, we've got some new clubs, and we've had a lot more kids participating. So I think that's a good thing. And so going back to the Graham County Travel and Tourism sponsorship, when I went and spoke with them, they agreed to give us the money to buy arena panels if we are awarded the grant money. So that will count towards the matching funds needed for that grant application. So turn the page and look at the slide titled NCDAs. That's North Carolina Department of Agriculture, Ag Development Projects, Farmland Preservation Trust Fund. That's a mouthful. So back in January, we filled out the application. In March, we sat through an interview process. And in June, they had a Zoom meeting where their advisory board ranked and scored their applications. And so our application ranked number two out of nine projects statewide, which I thought was wonderful. And the only project in front of us was a smaller project for less than $67,000. And so we asked for half a million dollars to help build this building. And we were supposed to hear in July back from the grant about a decision, but as you all are aware, the budget, the state budget still has not passed. So their funds are kind of tied up and no funds have been awarded as of now. So we're waiting to hear back about that. Projecting forward, if you'll look at the next slide, I don't know if any of you attended the rodeo back in July, but it was super fun, we had a good turnout. But these small rodeos and events that we plan on having at the grounds are kind of like the beginning steps to gaining momentum to getting this thing built. So there's nothing better than a good rodeo for a good family-friendly atmosphere to take your kids to. So I think that's a good starting point. But I hope that we can continue to build on that, not just rodeos and course events, but maybe if we can get the roof structure built, the Graham County Farmers Market might be interested in going and having their farmer's market up there, and it would be rain or shine. So there's even the potential for some festivals, the FFA can use it, our extension office can use it for educational activities, that sort of thing. And so what this is going to do is provide us a centralized venue for all these things to happen, kind of like a community hub. And if you look at the next slide, you'll see a flyer that says 4H Spurs and Burs Rodeo. So this was the rodeo that we had this past July, and we had over 1,700 attendees at the rodeo over the weekend. And I actually have some data available to you all, if any of you would like to see that, about how many people came, kind of where they went before and after the rodeo. It was just a very valuable piece of information, so if y'all would like to see that, I'd be glad to send you an email with that information. And so in October, we want to plan another rodeo, and it'll be October 24th through 25th. And this is going to be with a different rodeo company. If you look at the next slide, it's called Great American Rodeo Company. And this is not your average backyard rodeo contractor. They are, they put on IPRA sanctioned events, which is the International Pro-Rodeo Association. And so if you're not in the rodeo world, you don't really know what that means, like PBR, Professional Bull Riding, that is an association that's kind of, it looks at bull riding as a sport on its own. Well, the only larger association in the IPRA is the PRCA, and that's the Professional Rodeo Cowboy Association. So this, like, to be IPRA sanctioned, like, this is a pretty big deal. They told me that there's even people that would come from out west in here to compete because they're looking to get points. And I won't go into all those details, but so there'll be bull riding, barrel racing. And I met these, Melissa and Jason White, that's who is, who Great American Rodeo Company is, and super nice people. They love Graham County, they just kept bragging about how beautiful our area is. And I think they're really sincere and want to build a long-term relationship with Graham County to maybe make this an annual event. So I thought that was good. 4H is really wanting to build up the excitement for this rodeo in October, so we're planning a rodeo roundup parade that'll just be like specific horses and buggies and that kind of thing, just to kind of get people excited about coming to the rodeo. There'll be contests and activities, pumpkin art contests, costume contests, they're going to bring their mechanical bull. So there'll be lots of fun things to do. So I encourage everybody to come out. And after the rodeo, I'd kind of like to just come back and update you guys on how well it went with the rodeo back in July. 4H did the concessions, and we raised $1,800 for 4H. For this rodeo in October, I've asked the FFA if they wanted to kind of take over concessions, and so that's going to help them out and get them involved. Going back to the overall project, if you'll look at the next slide, we have a building quote from our project manager, Jason Marino. And we've had a couple of quotes come in, we've just been trying to get an idea of what this is going to cost. And this has been the most feasible quote that we have received so far, and it comes in at a little over $1.1 million. And so obviously, the half million dollar grant would not cover all of those costs, so we would need to look for additional funding to build this facility as quoted. But I'll come back to that in a minute. So on the next slide, we went and looked at Swain County Ag Event Center, and you'll see a picture of it on the next slide. Their event center is 202 feet by 100 feet, and that includes the end storage that you see on this building. And their bleachers hold about 800 people. And so what we're wanting to accomplish is similar in scope, like, it's going to look something similar to this, but size-wise, we would like to build it a little bigger. And that's why I've come to you guys this evening. I think this project, it's moved from an idea to a possibility, and I think that it's really growing, and people are getting excited about it. So I think that we should designate a committee to help continue and guide this project. It's going to help provide transparency between the public, the Board of Commissioners, and the people who are working on it. That way, we can help build support, secure funding, and probably even need to be looking at ground management, like keeping a calendar of who's using the facilities and that sort of thing. And so on the next slide titled The Team, you kind of see myself, Randy Collins, our Corporate Extension Director, Amy Holder, our, the whole Corporate Extension Office has been working on this, along with the Rec Department, Jerry Phillips. And I know a few of you commissioners have really helped us with some stuff as well. But I would like to kind of keep it the same, people that, you know, have background knowledge, know what's going on on the committee, but I think it would provide some organization and structure for the project going forward. Do you have any questions, thoughts, concerns, additional input?
So thank you so much. That was wonderful. That was, like you said, those numbers are actually really odd, and so I appreciate you bringing that to us and letting us know about that. And that answered a lot of the questions that I had about the center, so thank you. And so as far as the committee, I'm, I'm, as far as, and I know, like, as far, I believe Jacob's been involved.
Yes. Connie's helped.
And Connie, so I'm okay with him being involved. And whoever else you need, if you need us, we're fine with that, too. You just let us know when you want to meet and who else you want to be on.
Sounds good. That way, Brad knows who's working. Thank you for the time.
Also, the event center, Swain County, was helped funded by TBA. I'd be able to reach out to them and maybe just fund through those sorts of.
Yes. Thank you. Anyone else?
If you will, let me know who their contact is, if you know, at TBA.
Yeah.
We'll talk a little bit after the lady, maybe.
Was Kevin Keen was one of them, so maybe TBA could find it one day.
Or Robinson, seven, eight?
Kevin Keen.
With, I know Kevin Keen, but with TBA, the Community Development Board?
He didn't say who it was, he just said it was one of the recent.
Those were, yeah. They're the folks that provided the veteran flyer for it.
So the next topic is the introduction and welcome for the new director. So that's Ms. Angie Ma. So do you wish to say anything to the group or the public?
I didn't exactly have anything to prepare, but I just want to thank you for your vote of confidence in me in this position. As you well know, I've got a long history in administration and working with our county. I love the citizens of Graham County, and I'm really excited to be going forward in this position and sort of continue to start my campaign.
So I personally am excited to move forward. I think that you've done great in our community thus far, and I have to note that we're going to do great.
You did, though.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you so much for being with us.
Thank you for the sacrifices that you will be making. My very pleasure.
We'll talk in six months and see how this goes.
There have already been many, and there will be many more, and I'm just, you know, really good at that. Thank you, Angie.
Okay. And do we have anybody for public comment?
Manager, we have Mary Jane Phillips.
Okay. Ms. Mary Jane Phillips, can you, want to say a few words?
My name's Mary Jane Phillips. What I need, seven years ago, I put my name on the list to have sifted into my house. Every time I would call and check on it, I would get the runaround. And I said, you know, I've kept on, I've called and I've called and I've called, but every time I call, I get the runaround. They ain't got the money, or they got the money, don't know what the commissioners are doing with it and everything. So when they put it in the paper this last time, I thought, you know, and I talked to Kim, and she asked me what needed to be done to my place. I said, a lot more now than it did seven years ago. And if I was, you know, younger and worked, I said, you know, I wouldn't mind doing it myself. But I said, I don't work anymore, and I'm no teenager, but I don't say I'm old, but I said, I would, my place is really going damn bad. And I would like to, you know, I just keep getting a runaround, and I would like to have something done to it.
So thank you for coming and letting us be aware of that. I believe we are, we are working on applying for another grant.
I have a lot of problems here.
Thank you for letting us know that, and we are applying for another grant that will help with those things. And I guess the application cycle will reopen at that point, so please do apply. And then, Brady, can we make sure that someone gives her an update?
Yes, so we actually had the pleasure of meeting with Ms. Phillips a couple weeks ago, and we walked through the process, but I've got in my notes as we, as we secure funding and kind of go through the application process to make sure we keep her up to date.
What is the address on your house where you live, Mary Jane? Where do you live?
I live at 3212 Central Road. I live right across the street. That's where I was born and raised.
Okay. Thank you. I know you used to, but I didn't know if you had moved around.
Yeah, that's where I still do.
Anything to mention, like, that force there could be any?
I don't have her phone number.
Mary Jane, can you?
You got it.
I'll, I'll get up with you in just a minute and get your phone number. We actually have a four-square-four meeting tomorrow. There also might be some programs that could benefit you possibly quicker. So we'll get your contact information for that, and then we can, we can talk to them about you tomorrow and see what we can find out.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Kim? Anyone else?
No.
Okay. Anybody else wish to say anything? Okay. So Stacy Clark, who's in finance, you're going to get an everyone. That's how that works again. I'll just talk later.
Good evening, everyone. And you should have a packet in front of you with the finance points of discussion. You actually have a stack in front of you tonight. We'll turn it up there as quickly as possible. And I do have Amendment Number Four. You have a copy of that attached, and I'll just go briefly over the changes that are included in this amendment. The 911 Fund, M.C. Henry had requested that we appropriate fund balance for GIS consulting, part of a contract that she's entered into. And the 911 Board has approved these funds to be used out of that special account, so those will be paid directly out of that account. Then we've been doing some cleanup on the Dogwood Health Trust, CDW supplement fund, so we were just cleaning that up and then appropriating some of the fund balance to reconcile the balances back to the project ordinance that includes contract contingency and reconstruction activities. And then we did receive the SRO reimbursement from Graham County Schools according to the MOU that you prepared. And so at this time, those funds have been put into the contingency fund as per this amendment. That's the intent, and we advise otherwise. And then elections, we are reallocating some funds from capital outlay to contracted services due to the rental of equipment versus actually the purchase of it, so we can add it to our assets. And then the Health Department and Child Health, we are reallocating some funds from salaries to contracted services just due to some budgeting issues. And then in courts, I just needed to increase the facility's fee due to additional revenue because I do have some expenses coming up. So the revenue changes were the 911 Fund appropriation of fund balance, appropriation of fund balance for the Dogwood Health Trust, the SRO reimbursement, and then increasing our facility's fee because of the additional revenue that was brought in. So that is a decrease to the appropriations of $31,814.24. It is an increase to the appropriations by $323,274.14. The difference is made up with the revenues that will be adding an additional $291,459.90. Do you have any questions about the amendment?
I would make a motion to approve. I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendment number four. All right.
And just to provide you a quick update, with the LGC, we are still on the way out. And I have a meeting scheduled with our LGC coach. He's actually going to come meet our new county manager. We wanted to meet him and bring him in on these discussions as well, so he'll be coming on the 25th of this month. We continue to have our check-ins, continue to provide the information requested, and he's just required to do this until we're current, which we're working very hard towards. So as far as an audit update, the auditors, we did get the engagement letter, we finally got LGC to approve everything. So they have opened the portal up, and we have been uploading the documents and getting everything to them. There were a couple of additional requests that weren't in last year's, so we're 80% complete, and I think by the end of this week, I should have the rest of it submitted to them. They've already come back with the initial questions. So it seems to be moving a lot smoother this time, and I think we got a better working relationship, so I'm excited about that. In your packet, there's a budget to actual report, and the actual revenues to date is, and this is just for the general fund, is $3,706,453.29. Our actual expenditures today is $4,088,027.31. As far as property tax collections are concerned, you have the August report included in your packet. Our collections for the current year for August, or that were received in August, was And collections that were for prior years was $41,811.74. So the total collections for 2025 is $1333,300. Our actual expenditures today is $4,088,027.31. As far as property tax collections are concerned, you have the August report included in your packet. Our collections for the current year for August, or that were received in August, was $513,423.19. And collections that were for prior years was $41,811.74. So the total collections for 2025 is $1,333,464.88 with a balance left to be collected of $7,694,910.52. Currently, our collection percentage for August is 14.77. And that will continue to increase, so she continues to make collections. And the sales tax collections, you do have a copy of that in the July report in your packet as well. July collections that were paid in September were $363,850.75. And because those are just the July collections, that is also what our year-to-date is. The schools allocation of the sales tax for July was $61,754.50, which brings their year-to-date total, actually their year-to-date total is incorrect because that should be $61,754.50 as well. My apologies. And their available balance, which includes prior year balances, is $517,251.30. And then the quarters and allocation for public safety, as the July's percentage that was set aside, was $34,393.45, which brings our total to date to $1,762,588.66. And that is dedicated towards our justice enterprise. And so as far as vehicle tax collections, you also have a copy of that in your packet. August collections were paid just now in the beginning of September, that's $60,151.20. So our year-to-date collections is $131,096.52. I do have a couple of other items to go over with you guys. And we had discussed last month about the attempted wire fraud that we had. So I've been meeting with United Community Bank with Pam and then she has transferred me on to work with a gentleman in the treasury management office. So we're trying to get a couple of things in place. So in order for us to use treasury management services to, to do the wires directly through the portal instead of us communicating through email and that type of stuff, we just felt like that's too much personal information that's going electronically. And so we'll be able to do it through the portal, but we did have to adopt a company resolution. So you have a copy of that in your packet. And it is, it's a, the title of it is Company Resolution for Treasury Management Services. And this is their standard resolution that they put out for everybody that's using their, their electronic services. So I would need approval, and I will need your signatures for that, but I will need approval for that to move forward with it.
Second.
That's a really good program. They send security features to every single transaction.
Yes, so. And they use all the multi-factor indicators and one person initiates, another person approves. I really like their programs.
Good.
Okay, so in addition to that, we did, Brady and I did talk to Apollo with NCACC and had discussed it with her. So she had given us a resolution she felt like we needed to have in place for Grand County to engage in electronic payments. And that's defined in General Statute 159-28. So this is the resolution that actually authorizes us to engage in electronic payments. And we haven't had one in place to date. So again, this was something that I would need your, need your approval for. And in this resolution, it discusses that there is a wire transfer payment policy, which looking through all of our records, we did not have one. So again, Paula graciously was able to share a template with us. You have a copy of that in your packet as well. It just says Grand County Government Wire Transfer Payment Policy. And this will cover any kind of wire transfers or any kind of ACH payments. Again, it really implements the internal control process so that not one person doesn't have total management of the process from start to finish. And there's actually like a, a form that we have created that will show you the path that it's traveling down and you acquire all the different signatures that should go down that path. So.
I like the way it's structured where it's got the free on.
Yes.
Structure in there, that way it crosses different types of people.
Yes.
And Stacy has already implemented this program as well already and has done it on her ACHs. Well, it's a good one.
This is primarily for the wires, but we already are utilizing for the ACH. We implemented it immediately for the ACH.
I'll make the motion that we certainly approve it.
All right. Okay, and then we als, we also need, needed to put together a resolution. This is for authorizing the execution of the opioid settlements with secondary opioid manufacturers and approving the third supplemental agreements for additional funds from the state of North Carolina. We went back and reviewed our initial resolution and it does not include the secondary opioid manufacturers or the third supplemental. So they did recommend, and they gave us a template. This also came from NCACC, their staff team. And they provided us with a template for that resolution. So we do have, you have a copy of that resolution in front of you and I would need your approval on that as well. I do have to reply, it's an electronic, or electronic submission of this form, but I do have to reply October the 8th.
I would make a motion to accept the adopted resolution for authorizing the execution of the opioid settlements with the secondary opioid manufacturer.
All right, thank you. And then working with my LGC coach, he had reached out to me and asked if we had submitted our financial performance indicators of concern response. Was not exactly sure what that was and he was very helpful with that process. I thought that when we did the corrective actions that were included in the audit, that it covered that. And this is actually something that we have to upload to the LGC portal. So it's in addition to that. So I have prepared that, he has reviewed it and given his blessing, but it does have to be signed by the majority of the board. So I do have a copy of that in front of you as well and I'll have to get signatures on that so that I can submit that to LGC. Yes, please.
Okay, motion, please.
I promise I'm almost done. I have three more small items. I just, oh, I'm sorry. Got ahead of myself there. And I do need approval for a charge, it's to Durin Books and it's for the Sheriff's Department for investigations that exceeds my $5,000 approval limit. It's for $5,044.10. Not sure what any of this means, but it is a car adapter and an expanded vehicle dock. So it's just, they put it down for the purpose for investigation. I just needed to get your approval to pay for this.
Is this included in the budget?
It's coming out of their investigations line and they do have funds available.
So that's an internal investigation for the Sheriff's Department?
Yes, they have an investigation supplies line item.
Yes, we do.
And that's where this would become a show and I did pre audits to ensure that we could have the funds available.
Motion to approve what you need done on that, Stacy.
Okay.
This is from that one using the trial court, what it's for. So investigation, I can pay. Do without or void dispatch or whatever.
Okay. I'm glad you noticed.
It's just over here.
Yes, it's just over my limit, so I need your board approval. Okay, and then the next thing in your packet, we have an invoice that came in from Dan Jades and this is for the high jerk seating of the Ag site and the Health Department site. It's for $5,187.50. This obviously occurred back in February of 2025 and he just now filled us for this. But again, this is my approval limit, so I was bringing it to you. It would be paid out of the recreation expansion funds. And the last thing I have is a sales tax request from Grand County Schools. They're requesting to use $90,045 of their sales tax allocations. They do have that available. And this is to, they, they owe a debt back to E-Rates for some basic maintenance services that they need for ineligible. They had filed, they had filed several different times appeals and they were denied. And so at this point now, they're having to pay this back. So they asked if we could use it. We did talk to NCACC to make sure that it falls under the, the guidelines and they agreed that it did. So I would just.
Somewhere, if anyone didn't file a complaint, that's reasonable. They will not, they're pretty good about accepting, I don't even think. Somewhere or elsewhere, somebody dropped the ball and that's the reason they called that.
Okay, so that is coming out of their.
It's coming out of their sales tax allocation.
Yeah, they have had to do it. But they're, they're very flexible and that's, that's very positive and positive. Someone dropped the ball.
They said, well, they said it went back several years, but it was like 2008, 2009, 2010. They actually used E-Rates money and they, they used it for basic maintenance on their network. And then they've been filing appeals ever since because they said that it was something that wasn't eligible. So they got the final result back that said they weren't, it was not going to be eligible and that they had to pay it back. So there's a money payment.
Motion to approve that they pay this debt.
That is all I have for you tonight. So now we'll turn it over to County Manager Kevin.
Thank you. First item is releases in the amount of $213.23 and discoveries in the amount of $376,644.41.
I would make a motion to approve the releases and discoveries.
The second item relates to the building reuse grant that was filed by Ego King for, for their project. It was part of the, the state package, but they require a local government resolution supporting it like we've done for prior building reuse grants. And it just says that the match funds from that are derived from the local government incentive. So no additional funds are being involved in that. And I believe that is that in the packet?
It is.
And it should be in your packet.
I'll make a motion to accept the. I'll make a motion to accept the local government reservation. All right.
Thank you. The third item is a new resolution, there's a resolution amendment to the county manager. Since I have conflict with what comes to our health director, it then gives the board the power as far as that particular position.
It was just an amendment to change the wording, yes?
Yeah, it just changes the wording of the prior calls in place.
And since I do work at the health department, I will just go with the majority on this.
I need a motion to recuse our place.
A motion to recuse. And I'll make a motion to those changes as soon as I can.
Item number four now. The, so, project manager reporting. Jason is out this week on Military Lead. So he's provided a bit of information, a couple of updates. In your packet, you have an update on where we are with all of the capital projects. Got some good news on our sanitation project. So Jason worked with Gavin and limited materials a little bit. Have redesigned the building some. And that resulted in an $8,000 savings from the initial estimate on materials installation. And we were able to repurpose, so there were $20,000, around $20,000 in leftover funds from a Snowbird Creek restoration project from 2022, I believe, that the state has kept extending the, the use by day on. So we asked if we, because we were able to repurpose, you know, last year's funds for this particular project, it already been approved by the state, would it be okay if we just tack that on? They said yes. So that'll be about, like I said, about $20,000, uh, $20,000 of outside funds we're able to use on this particular project. The building has been issued, so that's kind of where we are in that particular, in that process. And the demolition hopefully begin in the next few weeks. So as you all know, the building houses our recycling program. So we reached out to the state to kind of consult with them to see what to do with that process. We can't operate that program without that building or without a secondary site. So their recommendation was just because we're, we're moving quick on the project, quickly got to get the building installed as quick as possible, was to write a letter asking for the amendment to the operation plan to temporarily pause that program during construction. Because the building is in an unsafe point now to where nobody can be in it. So we're going to try to get it down as quickly as we can, get it installed as quickly as can. So we can not only restart recycling, but improve recycling in the long run. But while we're doing that, we're going to try to find a solution to keep it going in the short term. But they just said, go ahead and, and make that request because it's a lot easier to, to amend now than to put it back than to, to do the inverse. So we're going to try to find, if we can find a partner to either store materials or do something in the short term. So we're going to explore that while we're going to push construction forward as quickly as possible. One item that he's asked for action on is the lead-based paint, lead-based paint and bathing project. So I think in the last board meeting, we were going to ask him to go back and try to, to pull that to try and get closer to what the budget is. So he came back with a new total of $58,850. The budget is $50,000, so that leaves a delta of $88.50. So his request, if the board would approve that, essentially do a budget amendment and, and find those funds elsewhere. And we may be able to simply use some of the savings from the sanitation building project to, to use to make up that deficit.
Shouldn't we have some like durable content in the June since they're basically running at half capacity right now?
We should, but there are still a few expenses that are going through.
We should probably by the end of this month, that gives it a full couple, probably six to eight weeks of, to see kind of where everything's going to shake out on it. Just we won't.
I would rather try to use the funds from, from then if we can, just because we might need the sanitation funds elsewhere. But yes, I, I feel like we, I would make a motion forward with that, that's the closest that we've gotten.
I'll second the motion. So we can get that done.
Any questions at all on the project management side? So for IG, our request to surplus the 2010 Ford Expedition.
Where's the current?
Currently with the sheriff. And I think the suggestion is to donate to the Grand County Fire and Rescue if the board chooses. That'd be two separate motions.
I would make a motion to surplus the 2010 Ford Expedition and then donate to the Grand County Fire and Rescue. All right. Do we need to do that separate?
No, it's going, I, I think that would do it with surplus and together, it's fine.
Item H, you have a resolution in your packet. Recognizing September as National Recovery Month, would you just see a motion to approve it? Item I is the approval of prior poll for the project allowance payment to Rick Lingi Marketing. Mr. Toopery? J is approval of poll to pay their request from the school in the amount, those are two separate requests, $3,174.15 and $24,900.
You would prefer those to hold on this and this was their sales tax allocation.
I'll second. All right.
Item K is a recommendation from, from Gavin, Department Head for Sanitation, to surplus the 1999 and 2000 garbage trucks. to surplus the 1999 and 2000 garbage trucks. So I think he was just seeking some discussion.
We have no idea what there were. I mean, we'd have to get that, but if that's a possibility, if y'all want it, that we can move forward.
Can you hear what you say anymore?
No.
So you want to table it until we get some value on it? Take your thoughts. And that would be fine to be, just to table that until we get some idea of the value.
Item L is just, wanted to make sure everybody's aware that the Snowbird Dumpster Site is open. It is up and running. Its days of operation are Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday, 7:30 to 5:30.
I had a compliment as well as a crisis up at the Bear Creek Dump Site today. Lady locked her keys in the car. And two hours later, AAA had to be flagged down as they passed the site one more time because they could not anywhere locate it with GPS, anything they had. And the young man, or the man who is manning that site up there was a great deal of help to the lady who was in distress. So he was very thankful for that. Would ask me to pass that along, please. James Gilder.
Item M is discussion of court being held Cherokee County. So we have a jury trial scheduled for next month. It will take place in Cherokee County. The actual substantive portions of jury trial selection is going to take place in Grand County once the jury's selected. It'll be about a four-week trial. So it'll actually happen in Cherokee County. So we've been working through the logistics of transportation, meals for the jurors. So the county will have to provide lunch each day and some other items, snacks and some other things that the jurors require since they're having to be bused out of the county. So we should have more information on that by the end of the month. There's still discussions about what everything's going to look like. But the main thing we, we wanted to get nailed down is the transportation component. We are using county vans. So we have a transit van that just came out of the fleet that we are fortunate to have. So that's an eight-seat van that also has 288 wheel javers. And we're also going to use the senior center 14,000 for van. That will allow us to transport our jurors. There'll be two deputies that ride as well that will be driving the vehicles. So it allows kind of, yeah, efficient means of, and low-cost means the best we can of making sure the jurors get to safely to Cherokee County. Item N is just notice that the public hearing for the CDBG grant is going to be September 29th at 6:00 p.m. Because we're, and we're required to hold two hearings, so that is not the meeting day. But that's just with the hearing requirements, that's just the, the first day we can have it. They're going to provide another notice for the second hearing date, which will be the DSS meeting in October as well. So just so you can have that in your calendar, it will be our second hearing. This will just be to hear public feedback on use of the funds that are going to be applied for as part of the CDBG grant. Last item is a request to surplus a transit van. It is a 2019 Ford van. Don't you read that out? So this van has a blown motor. So I think there, there had been some discussion about what to do with it. It's difficult to source that motor and expensive. So I think the consensus is to surplus it if the board so chooses.
I don't have the actual cost yet. I did put a request in CarMax with the information that the motor's blown. They still want the van, so they are working the estimate if you want to surplus it and then hold until we receive a value. And then I can let y'all know.
You need a motion?
To surplus.
Okay, I'll make a motion to surplus it and then put it on hold until we get the value and let us.
That's everything I have, Patrick.
So a motion to go into closed session. GIS 143, 318, 11A, 1356. For your confidential information, attorney, court, bravery, personnel, and contracts.